Call meeting to order, please. Supervisor Fisher, would you leave us an invocation, please, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for our many blessings, and we especially thank you for this beautiful fall day. We give thanks for this wonderful area of the Shenandoah Valley, the state of Virginia, in which we live. And we ask your blessing on all those that are suffering from natural disasters here and abroad, and I ask that your blessing and protection go with all those that are out there serving to assist them and restore their health and their facilities and their livelihoods. Be with them and protect them. We ask that you also be with the men and women of our armed forces that are serving around the globe, who protect our freedoms on a daily basis. Help us never to take that freedom for granted. And Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance and direction as we work for the citizens of Frederick County and their business this evening. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Supervisor Dunn, would you leave us a pledge, please, sir?
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda, are there any proposed changes?
No, sir.
Entertaining motion, adopt the agenda is presented.
So moved. Approval of the agenda.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Agenda is adopted. The consent agenda. Tenetive items for consent are tabs A, D, and E.
Moved to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Second, discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. This is the opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda items only that are not subject to public hearing. Did anyone sign up?
Yes, sir.
All right.
The first speaker is Bob Stig for the Clauser House.
Come forward. Limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Mr. Chairman, members, I want to ask you to consider tonight the extension of the time allotted to the Citizens Committee regarding the Clauser House to complete their final proposal to you. We think that that proposal is going to do six things. Number one, it's going to meet the desire of the Frederick County Board of Supervisors to eliminate its responsibility and any taxpayer funding or any liability related to or costs associated with the preservation of the Clauser House, or changes to the rating of the Shawnee Land Dam. Second, it's going to preserve an unreplaceable historical and archaeological site that is critical to the history of the county. Third, it is going to provide the basis for a permanent nonprofit organization, the Clauser Foundation, to be responsible for the liability and all future costs associated with the site. Fourth, it is going to eliminate any taxpayer-funded costs of asbestos abatement and demolition costs at the site. Fifth, it's going to create an additional permanent taxpayer, the Clauser Foundation, who will be, would be, under our proposal, an improved lot owner in Shawnee Land, so an additional taxpayer to the Shawnee Land Sanitary District. And finally, sixth, it will preserve the use of the grounds around the house for the citizens of Shawnee Land. We need the time to get some additional materials. The Department of Conservation and Recreation is not noticeably speedy in its response to a request for a written opinion about the potential impact on the hazard rating of the dam, but we should have all those answers within about 90 days, and so we request your consideration on that. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Ruth Perrine, also with regard to the Clauser House.
Good evening. For those in the audience who don't already know, my name is Ruth Perrine, and I live in Shawnee Land, which is located in the Back Creek District. I, as well as Bob Stig, CEO of the Claremont Foundation and member of Preservation Northern Shenandoah Valley, co-chair the Citizens Committee to Preserve the Clauser House. First of all, I would like to thank the Public Works Committee for their recommendation to give our committee another 120 days with a 90-day update. Trust me, should the board grant us this, you'll be kept abreast of our work frequently. Please know, there is no one who wants our goals reached faster than I do. I am pleased to announce that on September 28th, the Clauser Foundation was incorporated as a Virginia non-stock corporation. We are in the process of putting the board together and filing for tax-exempt status. The foundation has a Facebook page and is working on creating a website. Donations continue to come in by mail, donation, the donation button on the Preservation Northern Shenandoah Valley website, and the sales of the prints depicting the Clauser House and the Water Wheel House. Because I have seen some untruths posted on Facebook, I want to clarify that all funds are being raised and all expenses are being paid with the money raised by the Clauser Foundation. Once we have some plat options, it is our intent to hold a public meeting for the residents of Shawnee Land, so we can introduce and explain our proposal for saving the Clauser House and adding some useful amenities to Shawnee Land. I also want to make it clear that the grounds will still be open and available for the those, for the use of those in Shawnee Land. We are not planning to take anything away, but rather wish to enhance what is there. The results of the, of negotiation can be secured in the deed. I want you to know that I care deeply about my community. I have demonstrated this by putting countless hours for years in, into seeking information and informing the residents of Shawnee Land through newsletters and updates while no one else has. I was able to get enough support from residents to raise the money and do repairs to the old mailhouse to turn it into a functional pavilion. It is my goal to come out of this with the best possible scenario for the Shawnee Land residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Patsy Gokunour, or Gokunour, I'm sorry, I'm not sure which way.
Gokunour.
Clauser House. Gokunour.
Yes.
My name is Patsy Gokunour, Red Bud District, and I am requesting that the Frederick County Board of Supervisors will vote unanimously a 120 extension to the Clauser House Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Larry Allen Clauser Webb, with regard to the Clauser House.
Good evening. It's good to see you all again. I come tonight to ask you to approve your committee's extension for additional time for the Clauser House. Thank you for your consideration, and again, good seeing you all again tonight.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
That's it? Okay. Board of Supervisors' comments, are there any? All right. Brings us to committee appointments. Soon as the machine catches up. Northwestern Community Services Board.
Mr. Chairman, we have a potential applicant, but that applicant and the director of the Community Service Board have not been able to connect to provide him with additional information, but we're there, in the process of trying to...
Great. Sounds like good news. Thank you, sir. Historic Resource Advisory Board, will pass. Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee, are we ready?
No, sir. I've been in contact with several people who have shown an interest, but I have not yet done the interviews or made a decision, so both of those will go unfilled as of this meeting.
Thank you, sir. Economic Development Authority. We're making a recommendation here. Have we contacted Mr. Riley and Mr. Crockett? Are they willing to continue to serve?
They have not been contacted, but we can do that.
When, when is that expiration?
They expire in November.
November.
We'll meet the night before. Okay. So let's, let's contact them. Hanny Regional Library Board. Okay. Board of Equalization, looks like we have a resignation. And two potential. How would the board like to handle these?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that Mr. Ronald Schickold and Luther Stiles be recommended for reappointment to the judges of Frederick County Circuit Court.
Have a motion to recommend, second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Then I assume that we'll still be seeking another?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Board Zoning Appeals, Red Bud. Are we ready, sir?
No, sir.
Thank you. Back Creek, are we ready?
Yes, sir. I've talked to Mr. Rinker. He is willing to be recommended for a reappointment to the judges of Frederick County Circuit Court, and I would so move.
Motion to recommend to the court, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And Mr. Rinker is recommended for reappointment. All right. So that comes to the request for the Commissioner of Revenue for refunds.
Give one more.
I'm sorry, where was it? I missed it.
On the last page.
I'll get it.
More appointment on the last page.
Okay, Member at Large. Recommended reappointment?
I spoke with Mr. Madigan, and he expressed to me that he would be willing to do this again, so I would recommend that we reappoint him at the appropriate time.
Thank you, sir. It's our second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And the second, any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Now we'll go to the Commissioner's Revenue Refunds.
Yes, sir. The board has three requests to authorize refunds in your packet. The first is to home instead senior care in the amount of $7,379 for 2016 business license taxes that results from the business moving out of the limits of Frederick County into the city of Winchester. So you need to authorize the refund and make the supplemental appropriation.
Would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the refund and the corresponding supplemental appropriation.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the second item is a refund to Virginia Ten RSA Limited in the amount of $13,202.81 for public service taxes assessed based on filings that we received from the state in 2016. However, this business is no longer operating in their jurisdiction. So again, approval of refund and the corresponding supplemental appropriation.
Thank you. How would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the $13,202.81 and the corresponding supplemental appropriation.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Is there any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
And the last item is a refund to Food Lion in the amount of $19,326.31 for business license taxes in 2016. There is a transfer of ownership for this facility, and so you'll be collecting a similar amount from the new owner, but we need to refund partial year taxes to this particular entity. So again, approval of the refund and the supplemental appropriation.
Thank you. The board like to handle this one.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the refund and the supplemental appropriation in the amount of $19,326.31.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us to the Public Safety Committee report, under tab F.
Public Works.
That's where I am, Public Works. Sorry. That's what I get for holding the paper under.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher?
Public Works met on Tuesday, September 27th, 8:00 a.m. in the Public Works Conference Room. The action we're looking for tonight is to extend some time for the disposition of the Shawnee Land Council, the Clauser House facility. At the meeting, Mr. Stig presented a good presentation to us, the group is getting together and working towards, trying to answer the questions and a lot of research that they're doing. The committee felt like they are moving forward and, so at the conclusion of the meeting, the issue for the Public Works Committee was to extend, and we talked about extending to give them an additional 90-day study period. I thought about what we probably didn't think about at the time, and I don't imagine some other folks thought about it, we're going to be in the Christmas holidays. So what I would be taking a little bit of liberty tonight as chair of that committee is that we would allow them another 30 days on that, so 120 days into January to come back to Public Works with the study. And the committee, I think, felt encouraged that they're moving forward as best they can, working for the preservation of that house. So that would be my motion to extend the study period for another 120 days.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And the second, is there discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I've been liaison to the committee that's been working on this, and they have done a very, very good job of setting up a foundation, going through the items that were not done three years ago. There was some misinformation that was out in the social media, so I just want to reiterate that there's no tax dollars involved, there's no Frederick County tax dollars involved, there are no Shawnee Land tax dollars involved. This is a privately funded effort to save an historic house, an 18th century house, which has a significant history to Frederick County. In the 17, late 1700s, this was on the frontier of Frederick County, and the house needs to be captured. I'd encourage the committee to vote unanimously, or to vote to, to grant the 120-day extension to finish this project.
Thank you, sir. Further discussion? Anyone? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All right, we'll grant 120 days for continued study, and we are pleased with the progress, and we thank you. And number three is Transportation Committee report, under G. Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. The Transportation Committee met on September 26th at 8:30 a.m. to discuss several items. One item requiring action tonight is, as we were approving our legislative agenda for our state legislators, it came up, one of the items that come up was transportation funding. Mrs. McCann-Slaughter asked about funding for I-81, and it was noted that the I-81 funding is normally 90% federal funding, so the state would have little sway in having that corridor improved without some federal impetus. So, Mrs. Slaughter made a motion, and it was carried, that we add the I-81 corridor to the board's federal legislative agenda in addition to the state legislative agenda, and I think this is a really, well, I think we really need to do this. I don't know how far we'll get with it, but at least they know that it's important to us, especially here in Frederick County, that I-81, and as Mrs. McCann-Slaughter and I have traveled I-81 recently, it just, it just begs to be addressed, and so I would make the motion that that be added to the board's federal legislative agenda.
So we've heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And the second, is there discussion? Anyone? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. The motion carries.
That completes my items.
Thank you, sir. All right. Planning Commission Business, rezoning 0816. This is a public hearing, isn't it?
It's not.
No.
Sir, it's a minor proffer revision, therefore...
Oh, I'm sorry, minor, okay. Got it. Mr. Bishop? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As, as we've just noted, this is a minor proffer revision regarding a portion of land which was part of the original rezoning 0303, which was approximately 72 acres, rezoned to B2 along Route 50. May be more familiar to you now as the location of the Walmart and the Applebee's and the Sonic and a number of other items that you can attend out there on Route 50. However, this particular piece is part of the Phase 2 of that development, which is 28.17 acres. If you can look at the map to your left, we have highlighted the particular parcel along the right side visually, but east side directionally is where Retail Boulevard, that's the primary access point for the Walmart Shopping Center currently is, and acts as sort of the dividing line, if you will, between Phase 1 and Phase 2. Of course, this map notes that it is zoned B2. We're not changing the zoning, simply addressing some of the proffers that are on the zoning right now. And this may take you back a little bit. This was the GDP that was part of the 0303 rezoning, and of course, the, the roadway system looks a little bit different today than what was shown there, so if I can just clarify a couple items for you here. Basically, this location is where you now have Retail Boulevard. Of course, we still have the internal roadway. The primary roadways which we're going to be talking about tonight are Petticoat Gap Lane, which runs approximately where I'm drawing this line right now, and of course, the parcel that is being discussed for proffer amendment this evening is the Phase 2 parcel right here. Moving on to the master plan that was adopted for, for the property. Once again, you have Retail Boulevard. You have their internal roadways, which exist today. This is our Phase 2 parcel, and this is the location of the future Petticoat Gap Lane. Now, in simple terms, what we're seeking this evening, or I'm sorry, what the applicant is seeking this evening for your consideration, is the delay of the Phase 2 transportation proffer, specifically the implementation of Petticoat Gap Lane, which will connect Retail Boulevard and Botanical Boulevard, which is where the Marriott Hotel is, for, for those who are looking for landmarks like that. And what that would do is allow for up to 50,000 square foot of commercial development before that roadway were to go ahead and be implemented. The specific proffers that we're discussing that are being proposed would be that a right-of-way plat, dedication plat, would be put forth to the county within 180 days of the conditional zoning amendment, should you choose to approve it this evening. Prior to exceeding 50,000 square foot of site development, the applicant would design and construct retail, the remaining portion of Retail Boulevard and Petticoat Gap Lane itself, and the applicant will complete the previously proffered obligation of working with VDOT in the county to get the existing portion of Retail Boulevard in the system. And additionally, what this would do is, should the Lutheran Home development progress ahead of this, to where their proffered construction of Lutheran Home Boulevard down to this property were to take place prior to these folks being here, they would go ahead and put in the portion of Retail Boulevard to connect back to that, basically, so Lutheran Home Boulevard has something to connect to. The only remaining outstanding agency comment for your consideration at this point is VDOT's comment that the undeveloped square footage from Phase 1 of the development should be considered as part of that 50,000 square foot. It's difficult for the applicant to address that since they no longer own that particular development, but I'll let Mr. Wyatt address that, address that for you as well, but that remains an, an unaddressed comment that was made to these proposed zoning modifications. As we noted earlier, this is a public meeting, since it's a minor proffer, proffer revision under state code, the Planning Commission has requested, I'm sorry, recommended approval of the revised proffer, and should you deem this ready, the staff is seeking a decision from the board supervisors. With that, I can take any questions you may have. Mr. Evan Wyatt is here to represent the applicant.
Thanks, sir. Questions for Mr. Bishop, anyone? Mr. Dunn?
The additional 50,000 square feet?
Sir?
What type of traffic potentially will that generate? Will that cause an overload on the existing roads there without the further development?
To clarify, it's not an additional 50,000 square foot from what was previously approved. It is coming ahead of a road that would otherwise be, but in terms of actual trip generation, we have not only analyzed that, in terms of the overall rezoning, the proffer remains, that should traffic exceed 15,000 square, I'm sorry, 15,000 trips per day, the county is basically given the power to kind of push the halt button, if you will, until we're satisfied. At this time, the county and VDOT were not particularly concerned that the 50,000 square foot would develop the amount of trips that would create an issue for us in that location.
So basically, Mr. Bishop, if there were a traffic issue, the county has a way to address it, but the county does not see a traffic issue at this point in time?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions, Mr. Bishop, Ms. Lofton?
Mr. Bishop, the request of VDOT, how would that impact the parcel that we're looking at to the left side of our screen? How's that, how's that a impact at 50,000 square feet? Because VDOT's asking for 50,000 to include the undeveloped portions of, to the right of Retail Boulevard, right? How does this...
Theoretically, if you were to tie that in, they're under separate ownership. Theoretically, you would end up with a situation where the owners of the Phase 1 parcels could effectively hamstring the, the owners of the Phase 2 parcels and go ahead and develop that much square footage, and these, the owners of the Phase 2 parcels wouldn't have been able to do any development to actually pay for the roadway system that they're proffering.
Okay, that's good. That answers some questions. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Bishop? Anyone? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wyatt, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Evan Wyatt of Greenway, representing WWWLCE in this conditional zoning amendment request. John pretty much covered everything, and it's a fairly straightforward request, but to further John's comment on the question about VDOT and the 50,000 square feet, the most significant change to the proffer that's occurred since the Planning Commission recommended approval was the addition of language in B5 of your proffer, and I'm just going to paraphrase, it basically commits WWW to expend their money to go in and complete the constructed portion of Retail Boulevard from the signalized intersection of Route 50 back just past the Walmart. And the reason that that's an important proffer, and you can see by the revision date or the date it went to the commission, and then tonight, the county reached out to the Wilkins and the Solenbergers, there was a issue with the ability to get this portion of the road in the state system. So we had to work with VDOT, they had to go out and do punch list inspection, we had to figure out what needed to be done. The good news is VDOT's willing to work with us as soon as these items are done and get that portion in the system. That portion was originally committed to by the property owner that VDOT was recommending share of the 50,000 square feet of commercial, so to further John's comment, since this group is, is taking care of the remaining issues to get the road in the system, we feel it's appropriate that the development square footage should lie solely with, with this application and not be shared with the other property owner. So other than that, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions, Mr. Wyatt? Anyone?
I do have one more question.
Supervisor Lofton?
And I know you can't read their minds, but VDOT was more concerned about trip generation?
No, as...
What was their concern?
Well...
I can't quite figure it out.
To be perfectly honest with you, sometimes VDOT can be an enigma to me. I'm not quite sure. When we, we had several meetings with them, and the 50,000 square foot limitation was actually VDOT's idea, and that's how the proffer was developed, and then this was kind of a secondary comment that came after we resubmitted the proffer to them. But now, as John said earlier, there is a clear vehicle cap for the entire... But now, as John said earlier, there is a clear vehicle cap for the entire acreage, which is the Phase 1 and Phase 2. So as John said, there's triggers in place to require things to happen. This just allows for Phase 2 to start without the commitment to construct Petticoat Gap Lane, because in all honesty, there's really no need for it at this point in time.
Thank you.
Other questions, Mr. Wyatt, anyone? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I think this is Gainesboro?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the revisions to the proffers associated with rezoning number 03-03.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And the second, is there any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. Brings us to a resolution for a rail crossing upgrade funding. Who's leading this one? Mr. Bishop?
Yes, sir. What you have before you is related to our work on the Renaissance Drive extension and associated CSX, crossing of CSX Railroad. As I believe most of you or all of you are possibly aware, what we are working on there is sort of a two-pronged approach. On one hand, we're seeking state funds that can enable us to actually bridge the railroad. However, on another front, should we not be successful there, we are working toward an approval of an at-grade crossing. Part of the handshake level approval that we have with CSX right now would be to upgrade to what they refer to as passive crossings. For those who don't know right away what a passive crossing is, as much as I didn't when they first used that term, it is a crossing that doesn't have the crossing arms or possibly isn't even signalized. So an upgrade to that would basically mean to add signals and arms to improve the safety of those crossings. So to get the at-grade, we would have to upgrade to passive crossings. Here, we're suggesting Marble Road and Valcluse Road, which we're come to at the suggestion of VDOT and their rail personnel, and of course, in cooperation with CSX. Any other portion of that, should we end up at an at-grade, includes a relocation of the Springdale Road Crossing and a replacement of that with the Renaissance Drive Crossing. So it may be that your request tonight ends up not meaning much in terms of actually needing it to get that at-grade crossing. However, I believe our worst position, our, meaning the county, of course, worst position to end up with is some potential federal funding that we get to improve the safety of these two crossings, regardless of what happens with Renaissance. So we have put together the language. We had extensively sought to seek language from VDOT. We finally received portions of language from a couple different sources to which we used to put together this request resolution for you this evening. So pending your approval, should you choose to give it, we will then forward this to VDOT for their consideration, potential programming of these federal 130 funds, which are for this type of purpose, which is rail safety improvements.
Questions, Mr. Bishop? Anyone? Thank you, sir. How would the board like to handle this request?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say that in working with CSX, this particular go-around was a much more pleasant experience than I have witnessed in the past, and I'm grateful to them for their willingness to actually consider new alternatives to what we would have to do normally to get a crossing moved or a new crossing added. So I think this, as Mr. Bishop has said, whether or not we do an at-grade crossing at Renaissance Drive, that certainly there is no harm in upgrading some crossings that do not have the latest safety features on them. So I would move that we approve the resolution to request federal Section 130 funding to upgrade CSX rail crossings at Marble Road and Valcluse Road.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any further discussion? Just a comment, and that is that there are no Frederick County taxpayer dollars involved in this. It's a federal funding pool that's available to localities that we'd be requesting funding from. Anyone else? Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. Mr. Ruddy, that brings us to a response to questions from the Planning Commission.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here on behalf, if you will, of the Planning Commission, who at their October 5, 2016 meeting, requested that these items be sent back to the board, if you will, for additional clarification on what level or depth of study the board would desire the Planning Commission to undertake on these four particular comprehensive plant amendments. So I'm simply here with the request of the Planning Commission in front of the board supervisors. The particular requests are highlighted on the screen to your left. That is, they are the four comp plan amendments for 2016, the Leonard property, the Russell and Smith properties, Woods Mill Road properties, and the Fruit Hill Orchard property. With that, Mr. Chairman, I have more information should you need it, but I'd be happy to help the board with this item. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions, Mr. Ruddy? Anyone? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
How would the board like to handle this request?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Fisher?
If I could make a motion that hopefully will clarify this for the Planning Commission, I would move that we move forward for study the CPPA 01-16, the Leonard Property Sewer and Water Service Area Swazza inclusion request, and that the other three, 0216, 0316, and 0416, not be moved forward for study at this time.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
And the second, is there any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
I would just like to say that, you know, when we received our board of supervisors' packet at our last meeting, we did receive a memorandum from Mrs. Perkins, the Assistant Director of Planning, that had actually identified all four of these CPPAs where the Comprehensive Planning Committee had actually made a recommendation in the memo that said that they recommended that we move forward with the study, and on all three of the properties except one, and one of those, they made a recommendation that we move forward with the study in a larger scope or a larger area. So that was the basis of my recommendation at our last meeting. So I'd just like to clarify that that was the premise of why I recommended all four of those be studied because of that recommendation.
Thank you. Further discussion, anyone?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Dunn?
And there's nothing that prevents next year the same issues to come forward, so this essentially delays it for a year, is that correct?
For a year. Other discussion, anyone? Supervisor Slaughter?
I guess I felt like it needed to be studied, so I, and I understand, these are several parcels in my district. I would vote no.
No. Supervisor Wells?
No.
Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. We will ask the Planning Commission to study further 01-16 only at this time. Or liaison reports, are there any? Citizen comments. This is a portion of the meeting. We offer the opportunity for citizens to comment on any issue they might desire to. Would anyone like to comment? Anyone? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion. Board of supervisors comments, are there any? Supervisor Fisher?
Move for adjournment, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn is our second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
We'll stand adjourned. We thank everyone for their hard work.